It makes our life. Oh, okay, I'll start over. Hi, everyone. Thank you and welcome to the Fairfax County Branch NAACP's candidate forum. Tonight, we're going to be focusing on the Hunter Mill district. I apologize for a delay in starting, but we had a slight technical snafu and you know, technology makes our life either easy or hard. It's up to that, up to technology to make the decision of what's it gonna do on the day off. So, I appreciate you for sticking with us and rejoining twice. And so, since we're starting a few minutes late, we're gonna go over a few minutes beyond our seven o'clock time. So, we're gonna conclude around 7:15, 7:20. So, I, again, I appreciate you sticking with us. And I'm just gonna go through this really briefly, just so we can go ahead and listen to the people that you came here to listen to. So, I'm just gonna provide a brief program overview, rules of engagement of what's, what are, what we can expect from our candidates and how you as attendees can provide comment. We're gonna have those facilitated discussion that's gonna be moderated by President Michelle Lee and our Education Chair and Vice President, Dr. SuJahtha Hampton. We're gonna have a question and answer session, which is a time where we're gonna see if there are any questions in the chat. Go ahead and start putting that in the moment you think about it. And our Political Action Committee and Education Committee member, Jennifer Bonney's going to facilitate that place. We're gonna allow our candidates a few, a couple of minutes to do a wrap-up and then we're gonna end the program. So, I just wanna, we just wanna remind you of what's gonna be on the ballot this year. We're gonna be looking at all of the, these offices are gonna be in our ballot in November. However, we're focusing on the school board in which the endorsement process is outside of your typical June 20th primary. We've conducted, this is a third of our series of candidate forums in which we're speaking with candidates who are still seeking endorsements. There has been other endorsement processes in which other candidates have received the nomination. These are the only ones that are going through right now. Their endorsement process is currently underway. And so, for the January, I mean, January, June 20th primary in which we're gonna be placing our votes for the, those other offices I showed, such as the Virginia Senate, House of Delegates, Conservation District, or school, our supervisors and Sheriff's Office, as well as the Conservation District and County Sheriff, if there is opponents. The last day to register to vote in the June 20th primary is going to be May 30th. Early voting for the June, the, the primary election is June 17th and Election Day for primary is June 20th. So, please, please, please make sure that your, your information and your stat is up to date and you are eligible. But don't forget, we just went through our redistricting. And so, there's some, some folks that may have new districts. So, please, please, please check and make sure you know what district you're in and where your polling location is. And you can do that by going to vote411.org or you can also do all the things that I told you to do. Check your status, update, even register to vote at www-electionstopvirginia.gov. So, remember, because our, your, your, your districts may have changed because of our recent redistricting. And I just wanna go over our NAACP mission. We just updated it at national. So, our mission is to achieve equity, political rights and social inclusion by advancing policies and practices that expand human and civil rights, eliminate discrimination and accelerate the well-being, education and economic security of Black people and all persons of color. So, our rules of engagement. Part of our technical snafu is we had an automated timer system, however, that is, it was kind, not really playing fair with us today. So, we're gonna do things the old-fashioned way. We're gonna do it manually. So, we're gonna have our timer who is going to let the candidate know when they're out of time. Please remember, we reserve the right to mute upon once our candidate goes over the allotted time. We are going to give our candidates two minutes to do a self-introduction. And during our facilitated session, we're gonna give them one minute to respond. Our moderators reserve the right to ask the candidate follow-up questions for clarification. And there will be, they will be given 30 seconds to respond. We're gonna try and include a yes, no, just for the fun of it, just to keep the energy high. We're gonna try and put in a lightning round in which is gonna consist of yes and no questions. So, it's gonna be really fast. And then, we're gonna reserve right, time for everybody who are in attendance to put their questions in the chat and we'll ask the candidate. However, if we don't get through all of the questions, we'll make sure to forward them to the candidates. And attendees, again, if you have any questions, please put that in the chat. And we already had our at-large on Saturday. We're gonna be releasing information about that shortly. And these are the candidates who we spoke with. We had our, our forum for the Mount Vernon. Yes, also on Saturday, we're reviewing some of the information we received on that. We'll be releasing information about that. And here we are for Hunter Mill and from forum in which we're gonna be speaking with candidate Paul Thomas and candidate Melanie Marin. And so, stay tuned. We've got some up, the upcoming events. I'm gonna brush through this really quickly since we're a little bit behind schedule. And thank you for joining us. A message from our planning team. This is a collaborative effort between the Communications, Education and Political Action Committees. So, thank you so much for joining us. And thank you for bearing with us through our technical difficulties. And with that, I'm going to transfer the mic over to President Lee and Dr. SuJahtha Hampton to take on, to start our facilitated session. Thank you so much. You're on.
Again, good evening, everyone. So happy that you could join us. We are going to get right into it. So, I'm gonna pass it over to Dr. Hampton, who is gonna start us off.
Hi, everybody. So happy to see you. So happy to have you with us today. I'm so happy to have you, Melanie and you, Paul, joining us. Really happy to see you. Before we get started with our questions, I would like to give you the chance to, to say some stuff. So introduce yourselves. We can start with candidate Marin, who is our sitting school board member of Hunter Mill right now, and then we'll go on to Paul Thomas after that. And then we'll get started. Okay, you have two minutes for this and one minute for answers to the questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. I've got my timer going. So, good evening. I'm Melanie Marin in the Hunter Mill district. I've had the distinction of representing the community here for almost the last four years. I was elected in 2019 and have had a lifelong passion for public education. I began my career at the U.S. Department of Education, the year No Child Left Behind was implemented. And I worked in the office of secondary, elementary, secondary ed in the Title I office. So, my whole career has been in public education. Got my Ambassadors in Duke from public, in public policy from Duke. And while I was there, actually spent a year being what we would consider an instructional assistant in Durham Public Schools, working with our students who were learning English language and at that time, just seeing firsthand how schools were failing them. So, here I am. You know, I served, soon as I got in, COVID hit. And soon after that, George Floyd was murdered and it's been quite an intense time. But I'm really heartened that the conversations that are happening and the work that's happening is upon us. I've been proud to support real changes, such as changing the admissions policy to TJ High School. So, so it is race neutral and so there is equity in all of our middle schools for entrance positions into, into our high schools. I've changed Indigenous People's Day from Columbus Day. I did that in the summer of 2020 as well, in the midst of COVID. I've been advocating for an advocacy policy since January 2020. And I'm very heartened at the work I see happening in the strategic plan that we're about to vote on next month that has not only equity built into the strategic plan, but equity indicators alongside each goal. What gets funded gets done. The school board is focused on policy. And so, as a public policy expert, that's where I want to be sure I'm focusing my time so I could represent not only Hunter Mill, but all the students in our county, because public education is a community asset. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Melanie, I appreciate it. Paul.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Paul Thomas. I'm running for school board here in Hunter Mill. And why am I running? I believe the school board needs strong collaborators who really know how our schools work and care deeply about everyone in our community, especially those who need the most support. Why do I believe I'm the right person? Well, first of all, I went to Hunter Smith's Elementary, Hunter Intermediate and South Lakes High School. So, I'm really a product of Hunter Mill schools. I later taught math and computer science in the Topham Jefferson High School, what, where I also coached three sports. I'm also in my 17th year as an FCPS parent. And thank you for the flexibility. I wasn't able to make it this weekend because I was attending my son's graduation from Virginia Tech. I volunteered in our schools as PTSA president and Van Booster president and have leadership positions in the rest of Community Center and the county's Human Services Council. I know and care deeply about our schools and our community. So, what will I do? First, addressing the staffing crisis. We need to attract and retain teachers by ensuring competitive pay and really listening to and collaborating with them. Our schools will be stronger when teacher voices are stronger. Second, I'll improve equity and inclusion. We need to embrace our diversity. My lived experience as a Black student, Black teacher, and Black parent in FCPS will give me a unique perspective on equity in our schools. And everyone is concerned about staffing, safety, truth in our schools, and all of these issues have important equity and inclusion aspects. And third, I'll collaborate well with other school board members. School board members need to work well with each other and other members of the Fairfax County community. And I'm a proven team player. Thanks for having this forum and I look forward to the discussion.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the introductions. Before we start the first question, I wanted to sort of give a, a framework that we'll be sort of working with today. There are real threats facing school boards across the nation and we in Fairfax have not been spared. Attacks against public schools threaten our most valuable populations, including those we represent here in the Fairfax NAACP. We want to support school board members who recognize these threats for what they are and who will not appease a small minority of Fairfax County residents who seek to superimpose their agenda over the values represented by one Fairfax and what progress we have thus far made toward equity. We ask you to frame your answers around that central theme. So, if you could just keep that in mind when we are asking the questions. And we're gonna start with candidate Thomas, since we started with candidate Marin before. And I wanna get right to this first. So, I asked this question in the prior sessions as well, but I asked it in a different order. But this is the first candidate forum we've had. We've hosted with a sitting school board member present. So, I wanted to start with this question. Because to our view, Melanie, you had a front, a firsthand seat, not only to the threats I mentioned in the prior statement, but also to the issue raised in this first question. So, here we go. The current school board has caught a lot of heat for their incivility and poor decorum and infighting. How will you balance the need for good governance and collegiality with the need to do good work that supports the needs of our most educationally and economically vulnerable children, as well as those of our most privileged and academically stable children? It seems that these two needs are often at odds on the board. The Fairfax NAACP found ourselves in the uncomfortable but necessary position of having to write multiple statements addressing different instances where this tension between civility and justice landed on what we thought was the wrong side of the balance. Can you discuss how this tension might be better and more productively managed in the next four years?
So, thank you for that question. Really, the first thing for me is frankly, is picking up the phone. I think that a lot of, of progress can be made if just one-on-one school board members have that communication and can start to sort of build common understandings and, and really those relationships that can allow the, that, so that the things don't boil over in as much into the public sphere. Things are still gonna bubble over every once in a while. These aren't people who are in lockstep in their opinions. But I think that it's possible to work through more of it one-on-one. That certainly is something I've done on the, the boards that I've been on, the boards and the commissions that I've been on, working behind the scenes individually. And as long as you're doing it just one-on-one, you don't run into problems with sunshine, sort of, the public access to information.
Melanie.
Yes, well, it's, you certainly have to collaborate in order to achieve results. And what I've tried to do is come with data to conversations to try and lower temperatures. So, that, that's been one strategy. But I do wanna point out that, you know, I had this experience where NAACP was advocating very strongly for something and I stood in the minority of the board. I stood civilly in the minority and that was the truth in teaching resolution that my colleague, Dr. Anderson, worked on for months according to governance, according to what was laid out in process. And I honored that by continuing to go to the process and saying, but our rules say this. And at the end of it, I was the, one of only two people in addition to Dr. Anderson, who stood by and rejected the redrafted version and rejected the final version because I heard from you and many other core community advocates that that was not what you needed. So, I, I believe that I, you know, have, after sitting through some pretty contentious public meetings, I've developed the habit of how to stay calm and how to look to people with, you know, some kindness, even though I know it's hard. And I just try to remember, we, we all want the same outcome, which is to be respected, to be heard, to be safe. So, I try to look at it that way, but we have very passionate people on our board. I can't see the timer there. I'm sorry, I didn't set the timer. So, I'm sorry if I'm over. Am I over?
You, you are over, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that.
That green screen was helpful. Thank you.
Um, Michelle Lee and I will be going back and forth, but she is struggling with the cough. So, she just asked me to do the next question as well. So, I will do the next question and it goes to you first, Melanie. The first question here, the next question rather, is about equity as it relates to academic access. Learning outcomes, after-school enrichment, access to AAP, Advanced Mathematics, AP, IB show enormous disparity along racial lines. Furthermore, as Fairfax County is racially and economically segregated and magisterial districts are themselves redlined, there is an enormous disparity in offerings within districts and pyramids. We can all agree that our community is safer, healthier and more economically strong when each one of us has access to excellent opportunities. Please tell us how you may address this issue.
This is the, this is the, I'm gonna set my timer, two minutes. This is the core issue in FCPS. One minute. The only thing consists, one of the only things consistent in FCPS is the inconsistency. I will tell you, when the board asks for the report on all of the non-core curricular things, including world language and art and music, which I would argue are core, nonetheless, I analyze the world language offerings of half, uh, uh, over half of our, our schools did not have a robust world language offering. How were those decisions being made? How are they being funded, staffed, curriculum? This is just an example of the kinds of questions I've raised over the last three and a half years. When I look at the strategic plan, when I participated, every month, the school board has reviewed the data that the community and staff have provided about the strategic plan. And even at the last meeting we had, was it last Tuesday, I asked this exact question to superintendent. I said, if we're gonna allow that creativity that we know our educators need, how do we ensure that what happens at school A is so different than school B when it comes to access and offering? So, I think, you know, I, I've been there and that is the number one thing. We gotta keep pushing in FCPS.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So, I, first of all, I think that certainly some of this gets down to staffing. We need to make sure that we are adequately staffing and that we have staff that represents the diversity of the population that we're trying to serve. Yeah, that is number one. Number two is really about preparation. I think that we need to get better early childhood education out there. And we need to identify where around the county we have hotspots where students really are not coming into school really fully ready. And, and I know that the, I'm on the Successful Children Youth Policy Team and there was a presentation with data and maps showing here are areas in the county where we know that students are coming in, where they need more support. And I think that when we think about equity, it, it's hard to solve all the AP and IB problems that are happening in the 11th grade when the students are not coming into kindergarten really ready. And so, yes, we need to make sure that we're spreading out the AP stuff well, but also we need to make sure that students are coming in ready.
Thank you very much. I believe that Michelle is back with us. I am happy to do the next question if you are not. You can jump in.
Dr. Hampton, go ahead. Go ahead.
All right. The next question is equity with regard to boundaries. Okay. Oh, am I muted?
Did you say what, that last word?
Boundaries, with regard to boundaries. So, first of all, economics, it's all related, obviously, but.
A light topic. Got it. Okay.
So, we, with one minute, with one minute, one minute in boundaries. We'll start with you, Mr. Thomas. As we mentioned in the prior question, Fairfax County is not only highly segregated, but redlined within magisterial districts. This not only impacts what programs students can access, but actual school boundaries themselves. The most egregious cause of cases are in Franconia and Mount Vernon, but they're all over. Term after term, however, we fail to see fundamental redrawing of our districts that gives proximity the greatest weight. This issue is important to us. Can you undiscuss your understanding of the issue? Will you commit to good faith, a faith effort to adjust proximity-based school boundaries plan with a timeline for, for, with a timeline for fruition? It can't happen without a majority of the schools. So, even though it's less of an issue in Hunter Mill, we need every vote to ensure that it happens district-wide. So, Mr. Thomas, you can start.
So, first of all, yes, I will commit to good faith discussions about this. Some of the issues, actually, I know that it's really bad in other areas. But I've looked at the school district for Oakton and that's crazy. Like, that's like a big, long, broken finger. Langley as well. Like, I know that we have these problems where these districts have been sort of gerrymandered to ensure that people who have sort of similar economic backgrounds are in school with each other. And we need to really look at these for the ones that really could be more centered around community and around, by the way, this will also help us with some of our green and sustainability initiatives, but also just building community. When I look at, say, a Madison High School, which is really the high school for Vienna and South Lakes, which is to a great extent, the high school for Reston, that really comes with a lot of value in terms of community building and in terms of transportation, as well as all of the equity and diversity issues.
Thank you so much. Ms. Marin.
Yes, well, the boundaries are going to get adjusted when there is an effective boundary policy. And it is the board's responsibility to set the policy. The prior board did a study, but the study basically said results of what makes for a good boundary policy. It did not help the board decide what a good boundary policy is. That's the work on this next board. You know, we tried to do some big things and we did do some big things on the current board, but we were also trying to keep people alive, which by the way, nobody died from a case of COVID gotten from our schools that was reported. And we had that big responsibility on our laps. So, now, this is why I wanna run a second time is because we need to address these things. And I have pushed the superintendent on this and I believe that she has appetite to do it. I'm also hearing in the community that there is some community appetite to do it, which is great. And I hope those people show up to lots of meetings. But look, it is not equitable for some students to be able to walk to school and others take a bus an hour away. It is not equitable that we have some middle schools and high schools that are so crowded while others remain not so. A boundary policy is the work of the board and I'm ready to do that in a second term.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Michelle, do you want to, I don't know what, I don't know whether it's your cough or not, so.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm back with you. Yes, the cough that will, will not go away. So, this next question. Special education and discipline, yes. So, discipline incidents are on the rise and we are seeing alarming trends of students with disabilities as young as K and first grade being repeatedly suspended from school. FCPS's own data shows that Black students, Latino students, economically disadvantaged students and students with disabilities are up to four times more likely to be the recipients of these types of harsh discipline and punishments. How do you plan to address this disproportionately and create a proactive and constructive solution to this problem, rather than a reactive and punitive system of suspensions and expulsions for children, which has been shown to result in lower outcomes and which feeds the school-to-prison pipeline? I believe we're starting with candidate Marin. Thank you. Ms. Letty, you know, the data, you're absolutely, of course, correct in this data and it's appalling. And what I can say that on this is that on the school board, I have participated, of course, these last three years and currently right now in reviewing the school board's Student Rights and Responsibility Policy, the SRNR. And this is what dictates when certain disciplinary actions will happen. When will those suspensions happen? When will those reprimands happen? I think over the course of the years, our policy has gotten more aware to be more equitable. And in addition to training that happens with staff and now, you know, having a chief equity officer who's doing that work. But you know, I, I am what Bettina Love calls a co-conspirator. Okay, I try to use my agency and my privilege to speak up for students who have been marginalized traditionally. So, I, I'm proud to try and do what I can to insert that agency so that all of our students are treated equitably and that they never get traumatized for something that they do in school.
Yeah, so, in addition to revising and reviewing the SRNR as, as needed, I think we need to do a really good job of making sure that we're setting in place procedures for monitoring how the schools and how staff are, are doing. Providing the training and having the policy is great, but we need to know and what is actually the reality. That actually comes to mind when I think about the MOU with the police department. The MOU has been revised and it's, and it's probably lays out pretty clear. It certainly lays out very clear boundaries for what the police can and can't do. But how well is that being implemented with? What fidelity? How well are the police actually staying in their, their swim lanes? And similarly, when we think about how the SRNR is being implemented in all of the discipline issues, we need to monitor, we need to make sure we're capturing high-quality data so that we understand what's really happening in the schools and is this happening disproportionately in one area or another or with certain staff members?
Thank you very much. I'm gonna ask another sort of specialized question, sort of staffing question. So, it's like right along the same lines. And we will start with Mr. Thomas this time. We currently have about a 60% BIPOC student, student body and an approximately 80% white teaching staff. We see disproportionality, disproportionately high numbers of Black and Hispanic students represented in the discipline statistics and disproportionately low numbers in the, in these populations, the highest academic offerings and programs, AAP, AP, AP, IB, Advanced Math. Research shows that when Black students have Black teachers, they are less likely to be brought up on disciplinary issues and more likely to be recommended for academically rigorous program, programs. Is this, this is an important issue for us. How will you commit to increasing our BIPOC teaching staff and retaining them?
So, and I, I actually mentioned this in my introductory statement, that the diversity of the staff needs to do a better job of reflecting the diversity of our community and of our students. And yes, and this is about Black students and teachers, about Hispanic, all sorts of ways. We look at the diversity of students. We need to see it reflected in the teachers. So, a few different things. I think that we need to look at where we're recruiting for teachers. We need to perhaps cast a, a wider net into, maybe we need to do a better job of getting to the HBCUs and, and other places where you might be able to find more teachers of color. I think we also really need to look at how we bring teachers in. How can we use apprentice programs and, and helping with the cost of education to get teachers who are being trained and who are going through student teaching and really get them effectively to look favorably on Fairfax County as an employer?
Thank you. Ms. Marin.
This is an, is an issue that will not be resolved within our school walls. This gets to the heart of the way the public perceives public education today. And we know that our teachers are tired. They have worked so hard and have been targeted in all sorts of ways, not the least of which is funding from our state government, which we still have not received the clerical error, being rectified by Governor Youngkin. Um, you know, I have seen what the assistant superintendent and superintendent have done to increase diversity in hiring. They have done lots of very targeted initiatives, including recruiting some international teachers like, such as from the Bahamas, I believe it is, and going to HBCUs to recruit. But again, th- this is not just an education issue. We know that we need to have more diversity in lots of places of leadership in our community. So, I'm doing the work to build those partnerships and rebuild with the community that respect and trust in our teachers. And I think that will bring our teachers in of all backgrounds.
Thank you so much. Melanie.
So, one of the acronyms, one of the many acronyms from 2021 besides COVID and a whole bunch of other things is CRT. Can you explain your understanding of CRT and how the conversation around it has impacted our public schools? Candidate Marin. Yeah, CRT has been hijacked as something that it's not and it's been. alleged that we're teaching it in our schools. What I understand is that it's a college level theory of, of learning that talks about the relationship of race. But that's not what we're doing in our public schools. And I think it's been, again, hijacked to mean that we're teaching that, you know, certain groups are bad and certain groups are racist. I've even heard social and emotional learning alleged to be about C R T. This is such a prime example of how Governor Youngkin and a very small but very vocal minority are using equity and anti-racism as bait for people to get, to be scared of what's happening in our schools. And what our schools are, are striving to be welcoming, inclusive places of knowledge when people are learning. I just can't say enough how much we have to keep pivoting away from C R T. It's not happening in our schools.
Thank you. Thank you.
So true about it not happening in our schools. I actually have a cousin who's a law professor at Boston University, and she actually studies and teaches C R T. And so the idea of the legal structures that describe sort of the very systemic, again, legal ideas behind the structural racism has nothing to do with the teaching a more full, diverse, inclusive view of our country's complicated, sometimes uncomfortable history. And being able to teach the truth does not mean that you're teaching critical race theory. It also doesn't even mean that you're teaching racism as a current thing, so much as saying, here is all of the history that we have. Here are ways in which there are structures that are around now that are sort of our holdovers from old times. But that doesn't mean that you're teaching students that you're racist, right? Which is exactly how the, a lot of the right is trying to frame it.
Thank you. The next question is about libraries and access to books. Virginia P T A is considering a resolution next Saturday that on the outside seems to support school and classroom libraries and professional librarians, but would ban materials deemed sexually explicit. If adopted, this would give enormous power to parents to exclude books like Toni Morrison's Beloved and a great deal of intersectional literature representing BIPOC people and the LGBTQ plus community. How would you protect F C P S school against this real threat, especially in the light of this resolution that very well may pass at Virginia State P T A, causing an additional layer for you to have in order to defend our libraries and our books? How could you? How would you do that in that space?
So first of all, it's really critical that we defend our librarians and our teachers. We need to trust that our librarians know how to select and curate the selections that are in the libraries. And the teachers, in addition to that, know how to contextualize it and how to frame them. Oftentimes, parents come in and they are up in arms because the teacher made their kid read something, but they don't realize that choice was there or that, you know, that the student actually chose it. And so I think the first thing is to talk with legal experts and figure out what is it that we need to do in terms of the policies and anything we need to push for within the county or the state to defend our ability to enable our teachers and our librarians to do what they know is right. Now, I've got a lot of faith that they will be able to contextualize these things and select appropriate pieces. Because I know that some of the things that get out there sort of end up bringing up a lot of drama. But when we understand more completely, then we see that it's really a tempest in a teapot.
Thank you so much. Ms. Mary.
Yeah, look, I'm doing this work right now. I don't have to imagine what I would do because I am doing it and I have done it. When these critics started coming to our school board meetings and later turned up dressed in masks and costumes with signs, I went back to the policy and I read that and I worked it and I made sure it was airtight. And my colleagues and I, we made sure that policy and regulation was airtight. Governance, the governor said that we had to develop a sexually explicit materials policy to notify parents. I worked with my colleagues on the governance team to have that policy be in effect by January as per the law. And again, we explicitly put in language that says this does not pertain to any library materials. We are already doing that protection. Look, I want to say, and if anything, we could sue the governor, which I have done before. So, you know, I feel like I could be a paralegal at this point with all the legal work that I've had to do on this board with my colleagues. I know the ins and outs. I see what the agenda is. And I think my colleagues could tell you that I am right there and trying to figure out how to stay one step ahead of this machine.
Right, this next question is on LGBTQ plus students. Can you speak to the challenges of supporting students intersectionally? For example, though the challenges to library collections and access to materials threatens the LGBTQ plus community most obviously, there is an intersectional threat to BIPOC populations as well as as well as those whose literature so often includes themes of sexual violence and abuse due to the history of this country. This is one way the stories of black and indigenous people in particular have come under specific scrutiny and attack with divisive concepts, laws merging with efforts to ban books for sexual content. Can you discuss your understanding of intersectionality and how you protect all of our students? Students' access to representative materials and safety in school?
For myself?
Yes, candidate Mira.
So I really see more than ever about the intersectionality happening, not only with our queer youth and BIPOC youth, but with, in lots of ways, special education, family, you know, units. And the less we put kids in boxes and the more we see them for who they are, the better they will be. And the kids know. I mean, I marvel at how they see each other with such respect and inclusivity. Look, again, I'm doing this work now regarding, regarding the banning books. I will say there is such rich literature now available. Sometimes I wonder, did I not get taught this because of when I was raised? Or is there just such a plethora of materials? And our librarians, our students are advocating and craving these works, not just in social studies, but also in language arts in all sorts of ways. So, you know, if we really listen to students and follow what they're trying to learn, that's how we're going to keep going. So again, having our policies that, yes, will notify parents, but we're going to keep offering them. And we offer the option to opt out, but this is what we're teaching because this is what our community wants.
Yeah, I think it's also important to really lean on the teachers and the librarians, who are the experts at selecting these and helping to understand why these selections are important, but also to contextualize them. So it's not like we just, the teacher will just toss the book at a student and say, here, enjoy. There's a lot that goes into helping the students understand where does this sit in terms of, in terms of history, in terms of culture. And that stuff is really important to making sure that, that everybody, the students, families, anybody else in the community understands, okay, this isn't just something that I, as someone who's not in the school, am getting out of nowhere. It is being, I can now put it into context. I understand how this connects to these stories, to these cultures, to the history that was going on at the time. And so I could see the value of it, and I can see why these things that can be very uncomfortable really are important.
Thank you so much. This is the last regular question, and then we will take some chat questions and a lightning round if we have time, and then our closing question. This is about safety. Every student deserves a safe learning environment where they can learn and grow in peace. Can you share creative ideas for how to keep our students safe in school? Candidate Thomas, I think, is first.
Yeah, so the first thing for me actually is a set of recommendations that were developed by the National Council for School Counselors, schools psychologists, principals, both elementary school principals and secondary school principals. They framed up recommendations for safe schools, and a lot of it is about staffing, collaboration, communication, and focusing on that mental and emotional health. That when we have students who are more healthy, more completely healthy, then that can help quite a bit. Yes, do we have to have schools that are safe and have appropriate locks on doors and make sure that we have, you know, if we're going to have the officers in there, that they are really boxed into really focusing on safety? Sure, but we also really need to focus, I think, on the mental and emotional health of everybody in our schools.
Thank you so much. Ms. Mary.
One minute, okay. There's the physical safety. I worked for two years to get into the budget, the implementation of security vestibles in our schools that don't have them to provide another layer of support. That's to the tune of five million dollars per project. We're approving two of those at the next school board meeting. But I also don't want to harden our schools, and I know that you all have been such a voice when it comes to our school resource officer conversation. And I'm eager for the board to, to address that because it is vital. And I know the data about it disproportionately impacting students of color. Mental and emotional health. We've got the social emotional learning that we put in after COVID. I voted for any time there was anything about health and mental health. The state continues to not fund us at the appropriate levels. Two hundred and fifty students to one counselor is what the industry, the field proposes. The state still doesn't fund us at this level, but we keep advocating for it. Students will feel safe when they feel respected, when they have space to learn, to pray, to just become. So I'm going to keep doing what I'm doing. There's a lot, a lot here to unpack.
Thank you both so much. I really appreciate it. That was actually from both of you, exactly the answers I was hoping to hear. So I appreciate that. I don't know whether there were questions in the chat.
We have received a few questions.
Okay, so she's going to do this. I'm going to sit back and listen to the questions.
So one of the questions that we have received is can you give us a specific example or examples of what you have done to bridge the gap of academic inequity in our community?
Was that for, for any specific candidate?
No specific candidate, both candidates, yes.
Okay, so I think that
I'm not sure who went first last time.
Mr. Thomas went first, so we'll ask Ms. Mary to go first, and Thomas goes after that.
Sure. Well, again, a prime example is adjusting the eligibility criteria for the T J High School for Science and Technology to make it location based so that every middle school is guaranteed seats to have students attend T J from their base school. I think, you know, you'll see it soon, but the strategic plan has a lot of this in there. One of the new measures and indicators will be access to eighth grade algebra because that is a proven indicator of success and access to higher orders of courses. That was something that I have touted and endorsed from the start, and I can't wait to vote that into place. These course taking patterns is what's going to happen as well. One of the other goals, this is my last point. One of the other goals was about not only early readiness and readiness for school, but readiness when kids arrive into the system and those transitions from school level to school level. So how does a student know that in sixth grade, they're going to need some certain course so that in ninth grade, they could take what they want to take? Or maybe they don't even know that that course exists. This strategic plan that I
Melanie, you've been, I know there's a lot to say. Thank you.
That timer was helpful, though, if it's possible to put that back up. Otherwise, I'll set my timer again.
I thought I saw it. Maybe it wasn't there. I don't know. Can we put the timer back up? Lenore?
Well, I'll go without it, just for and then bring it back for the next.
Oh, there it is. There it is. Thank you so much, Lenore. Mr. Thomas.
So a couple of things. One, I was on the A E P Advisory Committee for F C P S back about four years ago. And, and on there, pushed for more robust level one services and level two services that really are accessible to every student. But also relooking at some of our, the way we identify students. I still remember when I was going into eighth grade that my seventh grade pre-algebra teacher said no to me going into eighth grade algebra, and that could have been a stopper if my mom had not pushed through it. And, and I ended up doing well in my mathematics. But getting access to those A E P resources is absolutely critical. The other thing is just as on the Human Services Council on the SCIP, working on the early childhood stuff as well because we need them to come in ready to learn and ready to move forward.
Is there another question, Jennifer?
There is. I'm trying to get off mute. I'm sorry. Let me get back to question. What is your position on hiring teachers from other countries to fill the U S teacher gap? That may not have the required certifications or qualifications that are required from those educated and certified within the United States or within Virginia?
Well, first of all, we're going to have to figure out how they can fulfill the state requirements for certification. The requirements for certification are not the counties so much as they are the states. So that's the first thing. Second of all, the idea of fighting for that so that we can have better representation sounds like a great idea to be able to find ways to, to bring them in and find ways to create on-ramps so that they can get certified, so they can get that, that state teaching certification. Having, right now, we have this tremendous staffing crisis. By the way, it is particularly acute in special education, but it's all around. And we need to find creative ways to address it and to address the diversity issues that we have within our staffing as well. So, so fighting for that makes a lot of sense. We're going to have to make sure that we work with the state certification boards to make it happen.
So I think it's one of a toolkit of strategies that our superintendent is trying to use. I, I think it's fabulous to have people from other countries and cultures share their experience and further diversify our teaching staff. I also know that the state is backlogged in approving even our teachers who are currently employed in F C P S, approving their licenses. So there are just fires all over the place when it comes to staffing in our schools. At the end of the day, we have to make sure that our staff are safe people. And that's why I have been advocating since last year for better policies and options in our school division at the state level and at the federal government level when it comes to ensuring that our staff are people who we can trust and have positions of trust to work with our children and not harm them in any way, physically or mentally. You know, also, we got to grow our own students. We have some programs to do, you know, Teach for Tomorrow that have not been maxed out. We need to keep doing that. But I think it's, it's good to be creative, and we have to always have the highest standards for our students. But we cannot have empty classrooms, on the other hand, either.
Okay, Dr. Hampton, I just don't want to do a time check with you. So it's seven oh eight.
I was using the same thing of the
We have more questions, but leave some time. Yeah.
We have two minutes each for their closing, so please decide, Karen, Camlin. Should we take another question or should we keep it moving?
Let's, sorry, it took me a while to find the mute. Let's do one more question and then do wrap up. I think we have time for that.
Okay. One more question, Jennifer.
Okay. This one is a little bit more general. How will you combat the false narrative of excellence versus equity?
For myself, correct?
Yes.
You know, it's a fascinating age when anything one says just gets repeated, and it's like a game of telephone sometimes, or it's just repeated out of context. We have to combat the false narrative by continuing to share our own narrative, which is that there's nothing wrong with our students. Our students are capable. We have an excellent school system that continues to try to strive to do better. We have to do better. I know it's not perfect. I know we have uneven outcomes and uneven access. But we need to, again, stop catering to what one narrative is putting out there and go to ours. We are committed to equity. We are committed to access. We know that there is historic inequity. And we're not going to, we're not going to give up our resolve to keep opening up access more and more.
Yeah, and then the other piece for me, though, is in addition to the importance of equity, it's also it's also this false dichotomy. And I love this question because so often these things are framed as equity or merit. And, and that false dichotomy just bugs me to no end. We really need to push back. And part of that means pushing back on the nature of how we measure merit. The idea that we're measuring merit using some standardized test that has very little correlation to positive outcomes down the road says, first thing we need to do is rethink what we mean by merit. And if we can do that, then that, that might be part of the beginning of rethinking what really is relationship between equity and merit. When we start opening up the opportunities for people, right? Because part of it is about not just using the word equity, but framing it as opportunity and understanding that a lot of people are worthy of the opportunities and can really make use of those opportunities. So Daphne, you're muted.
Thank you so much, Paul. I want to do our lightning round, which won't take more than 15 seconds because I have some questions that I really wanted to, to, to ask you. So what we're going to do is I have just a few questions here and you could just answer yes or no. And tell me what you think. Okay? We'll start with Paul this time and we'll just go back and forth. Okay? First, do you believe that our schools are currently equitable? Yes or no? Paul?
No.
Melanie?
Not yet, no.
Next, will you support the current admissions process that significantly improved the demographic, geographic, and economic diversity of the TJ student body?
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed the first part of your sentence.
Will you support the current admissions process?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Of course.
I figured you would.
Thank you. Sorry, I just cut out for a second.
Paul?
I, I, I'm going to begrudgingly say yes. I think it could be better, but yeah.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Could you say that when we're done?
I'll, I'll, I'll say yes. I think it could be improved, but I, I'll-
I hear you. I hear you. Thank you. Would you support exploring new ways to recognize and identify merit for access to advanced opportunities, specifically the AAP program?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Would you commit to reading Critical Race Theory, the book by Delgado and Stefanczyk, so you understand this issue and how it is being weaponized against public schools? I promise you, it's this big. It's one day's read max.
Yes.
Excellent. Trans students and all students can use the bathrooms, locker rooms, and overnight accommodations that match the general identity, their, their general identity, their gender identity, I misread, gender identity. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Take one. Great. That was the lightning round. So we have a closing question and then we have time for you to give a closing remark. Michelle, would you like to do the?
Absolutely. So our closing question, straight to NAACP mission. What can we expect of you that is in line with the NAACP mission? Candidate Mary, yes.
And, and two minutes? One minute, okay. I believe that I've, when someone shows you who they are, believe them, right? So I believe that I've shown you who I am these last three and a half years, and I don't plan on changing my commitment to equity, my commitment to partnership and collaboration. I have spent the last three and a half years and many years before that, building partnerships in this community in Vienna, in Reston, and throughout Fairfax, not to mention the state as well. NAACP was core in getting the science of reading implemented. I believe, I hope you know how I championed that, this bipartisan legislation at the state level and the county level. So I'm going to continue to do this work and I respect the community voices that you bring to the table. I believe that my constituents who I serve now are accustomed to a level of service and civility that I want to continue for them to have. They deserve to have an experienced person on the board.
So certainly centering equity in everything that we do is absolutely critical. So I certainly will be someone, I take the one Fairfax policy very seriously. But more actively, I think that it's incumbent upon the school board member to reach out to people who don't have a strong voice. I think very often we tend to listen to the people who already are showing up at PTSA meetings and already have a voice. But really, I think that it's also important to reach out, to go to the opportunity neighborhoods and to the community schools and to go in there and reach people where they are and to, to listen and to collaborate to find out what the challenges are that they're seeing that are not bubbling up through the traditional channels. So in addition to centering equity in, with every conversation, it's also a matter of reaching out and, and coming to people and finding what is, what is on their minds and how they can be better served.
Thank you both.
We wanted to give you some time to close out. It was a great closing statement, but if you have, if you, if you would like to have a minute to, to sum up, say something, we would love to give that to you. So we can start with Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to thank everybody for, for coming and, and attending to this. Thank you very much, the NAACP, for organizing this and putting this together, even through all of the IT challenges and everything else. I, I so appreciate the, the persistence through that. And, and I hope that you'll give me a chance to, to show you that having someone who has really lived it here in the county as a student, as a teacher, as a parent, as a, as a community-involved volunteer, that I can really be a strong partner, someone who will collaborate, who will listen, who will help to frame up strong solutions after identifying and really engaging with some of the challenging things that we have in front of us. So thank you very much.
You know, experience matters. The next board will have at least eight people new. That's what it was when I joined, when I was elected in 2019. Not many of us will have children in the schools. I do have children in the schools. I think it's a very valuable perspective to bring and it's an instant network that I have with many other parents. I think, you know, given this vitriolic environment, the governor, certain groups of people, the legal, the litigiousness of this, to have someone who has experience, who knows what's going on and not have to come up to speed is absolutely essential if we want to have consistency of not only services to our, our constituents, but also to make the best decisions. You know, I've worked now with two different superintendents. I've worked with, you know, under two different governors. And, and not to mention, this job is about public policy. It's about setting the direction so the superintendent can operationalize. So I'm eager to continue serving the community. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Karen, Michelle, would you like to send us out?
I can certainly do that. I want to thank candidates, first of all, for showing up and sticking with us even through the technical difficulties and certainly presenting your platform and answering questions, even the ones that were lengthy and required you to shorten your, your answer to, even though the length was long. We also appreciate those who came out, again, tonight, but who came out on Saturday, too, and stuck through our candidate's forum, which we had for Mount Vernon, as well as our at-large school, at-large school members. So we appreciate your time tonight. We appreciate you listening. We appreciate your engagement and hope that you stay engaged in the process because it only works if we're all here and being attentive, paying attention, and being part of that process. We ask so much, but we can't ask if we're not willing to actually put our time and attention to the work as well. So we appreciate you. And if there are no further questions and our hearts and minds are clear, we won't belabor this any longer. And we can stop the recording and we can put everybody back to their, their good night.
I want to remind you all again that if you put questions in the chat and they weren't answered, we are planning on sending the candidates these questions and they can provide answers for them, which we can share with you all. Because there were a lot of questions that we weren't able to get to.
And we will also be sharing the, the video. I saw a couple of questions about that as well. We'll also be sharing the video. We'll try to get that out as soon as we can this week.
Really appreciate you all. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.